Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 23, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustments. Chairman, would you like to call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are in file with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Roll call, please, Marie.
Absolutely. Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris is absent, Russell Lewis absent, Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jose Alcaraz?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni?
Here. All right, first up is we're going to move into an executive session. I'll read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas state law permits the exclusion of the public in certain circumstances, and whereas the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment finds that such circumstances currently exist and are as follows: Pending litigation in which the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment is a party, and matters falling within the attorney-client privilege in order to the extent that confidentiality is required. Whereas the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment will make public minutes of the closed session when confidentiality no longer exists. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that they are hereby authorized to enter into closed session to discuss pending litigation matters which are exempt from discussion in an open public meeting under the Sunshine Law NJSA 10:4-6 X sequence. Okay.
Roll call. Are you moving it?
Move, I move to the resolution regarding the executive session.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
Christopher Avaloni?
Yes. All right, we'll be back, everybody.
Okay, and I will now take roll call again. Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jose Alcaraz?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
Christopher Avaloni?
Here. All right, thank you. So we have a couple of resolutions to adopt. The first one-
Before that, you do need to adopt a resolution to come out of executive session?
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, that was correct.
I believe I do. All right. Whereas the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment has conducted a portion of its meeting in closed executive session to the exclusion of the public pursuant to a formal resolution adopted by said board, and whereas said board has determined that it no longer needs to continue its regular meeting in closed executive session. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that the said board hereby return to its regular meeting in an open public session under the Sunshine Law NJSA 10:4-6. A second.
Can I get a second? John?
Yes.
Can we just roll all in favor or go through the whole list?
Go through them all.
Gotcha. Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris is absent, Russell Lewis absent, Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jose Alcaraz?
Yes.
And Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni?
Yes. All right, as I said prior, we have some housekeeping issues. All right, so two resolutions. The first, breakwater treatment and wellness. Who's eligible to adopt the resolution?
For breakwater, we have Wendy Glassman, Jill Potter, Vice Chair John Scully, and Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
So I make a motion to adopt the Breakwater Treatment and Wellness Corporation, 807 Memorial Drive, 906 First Avenue.
I'll second.
Okay. Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Christopher Avaloni?
Yes. And as I was recused from the SIGMAN application, 1123 Summerfield Avenue, who is eligible to make a motion?
Jose Alcaraz, Wendy Glassman, Daniel Harris and Russell Lewis, who are absent, Tim Slick, and Vice Chair John Scully.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 1123 Summerfield Avenue approval, zoning board 20-22-08.
I'll second.
Second. And, okay, Jose Alcaraz?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, that completes our housekeeping issues, and now we'll move on to old business, a continuation of hearing of the Ocean View Development, 704 Fourth Avenue, 13 Grand Point Way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Thomas Pearl, I'm a partner with Sils Commiss and Gross. I also live here locally in Dillon Tower. I first want to start off and talk about, a little bit about what happened last week, our last meeting. I watched the video. It wasn't becoming from our side, and I just want to apologize for that. I don't think, I think it went off the rails a little bit, candidly, and I'm hoping with what we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to get back on track and do it the right way. I just want to note our respect for the work you do. I know you're here volunteers. We're going to fix what happened. We heard you, we listened, and I think what you're going to hear tonight, I think, is responsive to a lot of that, and I hope it's a healthy dialogue as we move forward about some issues that happened here. So with that, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking because I've brought professionals, and I know your time is valuable, so I want to respect that, but I'll just note that tonight I have Matthew Wilder, a professional engineer, who has been here before, he's been sworn and credentialed, and I also have McKinley Mertz from Hiring Rule, she's a professional planner, and she'll be presenting testimony as well. We submitted some plans and architectural renderings. We've also submitted a statement. I've gone through the resolution, you know, what we've submitted. We've looked at the report of the professional engineer from the board's perspective, and we'd like to have a discussion about that. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to stay seated during the whole thing. I think it'd be more conducive, and I'm going to turn it over to my engineer to talk about it in a little more of a conversational format rather than the normal question and answer, if that's all right.
Mr. Pearl, you understand the reason why you're here is because of resolution non-compliance?
Yes, sure.
And that there were several areas in that resolution that we're not complying with that we were very, let's say, upset by. And, you know, since you're new to this whole application at this point, because this application has gotten quite some time, are you aware of those areas that we would like to discuss?
I'm well aware of it. I watched the video. There were some breakups in it because of the recording problems, but I saw what happened. I'm aware of what the issues are. We've come here to ask for mercy, quite candidly. We recognize that things were done incorrectly. We're here to fix that and come into compliance, and where it's a little bit of a hill to climb, we're going to ask for a little courtesy and perhaps a variant or such as we go forward with this conversation. But yes, I did watch this to answer your question, Mr. Chair. It wasn't a good look from our side, and again, I apologize. We're going to hopefully wipe that slate clean. I know that we're here in a position of where we weren't in compliance, that the board, with good reason, had some concerns about the non-compliance issues. I think with the changes we're making-
I think that's quite an understatement.
Understood, and that's fair. You know, I'm here, you know, I'm trying to move forward with this, and I think, as you hear tonight, again, I do sincerely apologize, it wasn't the right thing to do. We're going to present some testimony to try to get around that, to address the board's concerns and resolve these issues and these non-compliance concerns.
I appreciate you're new to all of this, Mr. Pearl, and I am willing to give you every effort for your help in this matter.
I thank you, that is a courtesy, I appreciate it. All right, with-
Mr. Wilder, if you don't mind, we're going to swear to you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, if you could just state your name and story last time.
Sure, Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R. I'm a professional engineer. I run the engineering division at Morgan Engineering. I've been a licensed professional engineer for going on 10 years, and I have appeared before this board on multiple occasions.
Is your license still in good standing, Mr. Wilder?
Yes, it is.
All right, we accept your credentials. Thank you, please proceed.
Sure.
I'll just say, first of all, tonight, I think we're going to do it sort of in an organized format in that Mr. Wilder's going to walk us through the property, and thought that was the best way. It conports with what the professionals' report says, so as we go, we're going to walk through the yard from front to back, and then we'll go into the interior, and I think we'll address every single issue that has been raised here and all the non-compliance issues.
So again, I'll sort of work from Fourth Avenue and work my way south into the property, and this is going to be a summary of the changes that we'd like to make from a site plan-related aspect from what was previously approved by this board. So the first change I'm going to give-
Could I ask one quick question, Mr. Wilder, before you proceed? As you know, we left the last meeting with certain requests at the time. Were there any changes made to the property in the time that you appeared before us in the last meeting?
There was one change that was made to the property. There was a question regarding a stormwater drain on the west side of the building that has since been installed. There are additional changes that we're going to make to the proposed fencing and to address some of the comments within the insight review to better address the concerns of the board.
There were no other changes made to the property either in the basement or anywhere else?
Well, I don't know, but are you here to testify about the interior?
I am not.
He's only, he's an engineer.
Sure, I understand, I see.
He's only testifying.
I understand. Go right ahead, Mr. Wilder.
Sure. So the first change that we're looking to make is for fencing around the property. We would like to propose a four-foot aluminum fence. As part of that fencing, we would like to propose an automatic gate across the driveway. The purpose of this gate is for sort of privacy and security. There was a comment brought up that the fence on the front property line would require variance relief, whereas a 12-inch or one-foot setback is required. We take no issue with that, and we will pull that fence back one foot to comply. We would, are still asking for the gate, again, for privacy and security, and we do note that as currently shown on my plan, the swing gate is shown impacting the sidewalk that provides access to that front unit. We will certainly flip that gate so it opens the other direction, so you have clear access to that sidewalk. As it relates to that walkway, the purpose that the walkway was changed from going straight out to the public sidewalk versus how it shows now is if someone were parking in the rear of the property and then walking to that front unit, they'd be walking down the drive aisle into the public sidewalk, down the public sidewalk, and then back into the property. We thought it made more sense to have a more efficient pedestrian access point to route the sidewalk to the drive aisle so that you could access it without going into the public right-of-way. So that is another change that we're requesting, to have that sidewalk in that location. The landscaping is another area where we are seeking some deviations. My plan currently shows on the western property line the elimination of evergreen trees and the proposal for a Baltic ivy. That's since been eliminated. Those trees are now, the evergreen trees are in as were the approved plan. So really, from a landscaping perspective, sort of what we're looking to do, and we take no exception with Ms. Miller's request, that we work with her office to satisfy it, we sort of shifted landscaping around. I do have some pictures that were taken today of specifically the northeastern property line, and I can share those.
You have these?
You don't, okay. So these are two pictures that were taken from, taken from the, sort of in front of the building, looking towards the east. During construction, the neighbor to the east had contacted the applicant about trying-
Do you have to mark these?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so, want to mark these as, I guess we'll mark them as a packet, right?
Sure.
How many photos are-
Just, just two.
Just two photos? Okay, approved?
Please.
And I guess we'll mark them Amendment A1.
Okay.
Since this is, they've proposed amendments to the application.
Okay.
And is your attention to the existing landscaping?
That's at the northeast corner of the property, that's correct.
Thank you.
So as those pictures sort of illustrate, there are some new plantings in that area, but you also see the mature vegetation on the neighboring property. During construction, the neighbor had contacted the city about some concerns that our planting were going to damage her existing plantings. The city contacted us and said, would you work with the neighbor? And certainly, you know, we don't want to rip out mature aesthetically pleasing vegetation to install new vegetation. So we are deviating slightly in that area, but we think it makes sense in that it's maintaining some existing mature vegetation. So that's really the only deviation from a landscaping perspective that we're looking for at this time, but we certainly will coordinate with Ms. Miller to make sure that it really meets the intent of what the city was looking for when they initially approved this application. And then the last site plan-related change that we'd like to make, and again, this is before I go through the updated inside engineering letter, is in regards to the back parking area. So that was initially approved as porous pavers in the back, and our, we would like to change that to porous asphalt. The issue we're running into with the porous pavers is some material availability, but more finding a company who will warranty the pavers for this use in this location. The subbase-
Say that again, Mr. Wilder, what do you mean, warrant?
So, right, so again, what we're looking for is the state statute as relates to porous pavers and porous asphalt has a certain subbase that's required. So they are not set in concrete like most pavers are because they're designed to allow water to go through.
Understood.
So the contractors that we've been dealing with, they don't warranty the work because of the base material-
The work itself.
The work itself. So if pavers were to move, get ripped up, they don't warranty the work because the base that's required by the state as far as the stormwater-
So your reasoning for using, not using pavers is because they don't warrant their work?
Well, so-
And you would rather use the asphalt instead?
So the porous pavers and the porous asphalt in the eyes of the state are completely identical from a stormwater perspective. They both allow water-
Yeah, but from an aesthetic value, they are not the same, Mr. Wilder.
Agreed, but when we look at the location of the parking lot, nobody sees it except for the tenants on the property.
Well, that's because you're making it more of a compound by closing it in with gates and making it look very fortress-like.
Oh, there are neighbors to the south and east and west. We have a view into the rear yard.
So then, so then there is a view of it.
They would have a view into the property from second floors. Due to the landscaping, anybody in their backyard that looks at this property would simply see vegetation.
But again, the aesthetic value of asphalt versus pavers is quite different.
They are different materials.
Especially if we're trying to maintain a residential look, more like a single-family home versus something that looks like a multifamily home.
Are you receiving a guarantee from the asphalt contractor?
Porous asphalt is more widely used, so we have no-
But are they giving you a guarantee?
We are. We were able to get that from the asphalt company. Again, porous asphalt is much more commonly used in vehicular loading operations than porous pavers.
So your only issue between the two is a guarantee for you or for your-
For the work itself.
And maintenance, no removal as well. Again, these pavers are not, are not set in concrete, so the removal of the snow, porous pavement is easier to maintain than porous pavers.
And is it only the parking area or is it the entire driveway?
The driveway was, the stem of the driveway was approved as regular asphalt, and the rear was approved as porous pavers originally.
Do you see, do you see any issue with, there's a lot of turning movements happening back there? I don't know if there's a technical term for it, but if the tire's constantly going over, is the porous asphalt going to hold up to the test of time for a lot of turning movements back there, like a paper would?
I think it would. I mean, the pavers, the porous pavement has been around much longer than porous pavers and used much more widely in traffic operations. A portion of the Garden State Parkway was, was sort of a test pilot for porous pavement. That was done probably 18, 20 years ago. That has held up remarkably well. So porous pavement, generally speaking, has, doesn't have any issues with ruts or anything like that, and this is, again, a small parking lot, not a lot of turnover, and not heavy vehicles. So I don't envision any issue from the porous pavement holding up over time.
And what's the exact concern with the pavers? If there's not heavy turnover?
It's maintenance of them. So like anything else, no removal, you have certain maintenance issues-
So mainly just snow removal?
That would be the biggest maintenance issue, yes. With porous pavement and porous concrete, or excuse me, porous pavers, you have the same issue where you can't sand the area to get rid of ice. But pavers, as you can imagine, the snow, if you use a handheld snow plow or anything like that, has a little bit of an issue potentially if the pavers aren't even, whereas porous pavement wouldn't have that issue. So it's a maintenance issue, but again, it's also, we're finding from the contractors that we're talking with and speaking with, they have concerns about the long-term viability of the pavers considering the turning movements. We're not having any of those concerns expressed to us regarding the porous pavement, but they are expressing those concerns, and these are the porous interlocking pavers. These manufacturers, this is what they issue. They're expressing, expressing concerns to us about the long-term viability of pavers. So that's the reason that we're coming before this board, if, for that change. If they told us it will hold up fine and they have no issues, we would have installed that months and months, if not years ago. But the issue is that we're finding contractors telling us, this isn't the right product for this area.
And I'll just add, from the aesthetic point of view, we have the driveway, which is more visible from the street, and the neighbors, that already is this porous asphalt. So now in the back, which would only be visible from the second floor of the neighbors' properties, certainly not from the street, unless you like climb over the fence or look hard, that would be a different, that's where we're putting the, yeah, this pour of, I think it would just be more consistent as it would go with the flow, literally, in terms of the porous pavement or asphalt there.
My concern is that your client, and I believe he testified the last time that we're here, is that he's a developer or builder, and this is not his only property. If this was a homeowner who's doing this for the first time and didn't know the difference between porous pavers or porous asphalt, I can see them coming back to the board and saying, you know, we agreed to put the pavers in here, but now, after talking to the contractors, doing our research on the material, we now see a difference for long-term viability. But we're dealing with a sophisticated client who deals with several properties, so my concern is that, why didn't you know this going upfront, and why did you agree to it initially when we were here the last time, in the first resolution, that now all of a sudden you're coming to us with this revelation that your contractors are telling you that there's this difference and there's this long-term viability issue? Again, your client is a sophisticated client when it comes to building and building materials. I'm having a hard time believing that just now you've come to this resolution, revelation that pavers are not going to withstand the same amount that the asphalt is.
Yeah, so I could respond to that. You know, unfortunately, I'll be candid, you know, there were a lot of decisions made as this project rolled out, and this board should never be in the position of someone coming and asking for forgiveness versus permission. Right now, we're coming and asking for permission on this. He is a sophisticated developer, absolutely, but organic things come up in the natural build-out of projects like this, even for sophisticated builders. This is one of them. There's no ulterior motive here. It was just when this got put down, when the conversation happened on the ground level, and you're going to see this again, and I acknowledge that, you know? It's not ideal, and I apologize for that, but here we are, and we realize this is a better scenario on many levels, and that's what we're talking about. So we would appreciate if the board would consider that. We're bringing forward testimony about how the aesthetic would follow through what's already approved, that, you know, this was just a ground-level decision that made out, was made as this happened, and we're asking for permission to implement it.
Mr. Pearl, I'm having a little difficulty, difficulty myself in believing or understanding this because initially, when I heard about the asphalt, it wasn't in regards to the durability of the pavers, it was in regards to the fact that it was hard to get the materials, not the fact that it was not as durable as asphalt. So I'm sorry if I'm a little confused as to what you're telling me now, because previously I was told because it was difficult during the COVID time to get certain materials. That's what I was told.
Okay, that wasn't my understanding. I know we could get the asphalt because that's part of the-
And it was much easier just to switch to asphalt than it was to use pavers they couldn't get. So I'm having a hard time believing this.
And from an engineering perspective, if these pavers are meant to do driveways and parking, and wouldn't there be a known problem with this other than this happening right now?
So we see porous pavers mostly implemented for patio and things of that nature. I'm not going to say they're not, they're not done in loading areas, vehicle loading areas, but more commonly, they're, somebody's over there at allowable impervious coverage, they want to put pavers down around their pool, they put porous pavers, they get some credit from an impervious versus impervious standpoint. So again, they are, they are used in traffic areas, but every, every site is unique. You have a tight parking area where there's a lot of turning movements, key turns back and forth, and this is what the folks who install these and warranty these pavers are advising us. But again, they are used, but porous asphalt is a more widely used substance for this type of application.
And I'll just remind you, the issue with the availability, I think, came up with the siding, not the pavers and the asphalt scenario, so I know that's another one we're going to get to, Mr. Chairman, but maybe what we could do is hit pause on this when my client comes up and he'll testify, you know, you have the ability to ask him, you can check out his veracity, the story that's told, and make the decision based on that. But this is what's going forward on this, that we're asking for this relief, and obviously we're going to do what the board says. I don't want to lead you to think anything else. We're just coming here for, asking for approval for this, and we think there's a number of reasons why, and setting aside the issue of the sophisticated builder, and maybe we could have seen this ahead of time, as this build-out rolled out, I think ideas came, changes were made, and that's why we're hoping to get approval to change the approval from the resolution from the board.
Is there a different product that could be suggested besides porous asphalt and these porous pavers?
The three porous materials that are accepted by the state of New Jersey as all effectively being the same product are porous asphalt, porous concrete, and porous pavers. Any other material, we would have to find some material that was third-party tested in accordance with the NJCAT requirement, and I'm not aware of those, so from a strictly stormwater standpoint and what we're looking at from a porous material, it would be those three. Those three materials would be approved by the state.
So- Please proceed, Mr. Pearl.
Sure. So those are really the elements that we're looking for modification to the site plan. Again, there are the buildings and interiors, I won't be speaking to those, but there are a few comments within the updated May 18 insight engineering review that I think is just prudent to hit, just to sort of complete the record. And mainly, I'm going to start on page three with comment number four, which talks, which really starts with the engineering comments, and that talks about the profile, if you will, of the porous pavers that were previously approved versus the porous asphalt. So we will provide the necessary calculations to justify proposed porous asphalt if the board were so inclined to approve. They would have the same storage profile that the porous pavers had, so we will provide that calculation if approved. Number five, as I indicated, the yard inlet on the west side of the building has since been installed, so we've addressed that comment, and that was installed in the last week, because we did hear the concern, and we wanted to do what we could within reason at the time. Number six, which relates to the approved lighting, the light fixtures are different than what was initially approved. I will have to provide a light, revised lighting analysis that shows that. The lights that were selected actually are a little bit dimmer, so from a light nuisance standpoint or light trespass, they're not going to have an impact on the neighbors. If anything, it'll be a little bit reduced, but we will provide that to the board's professionals to make sure that they are- But we will provide that to the board professionals to make sure that they are in agreement with that.
How come that wasn't provided before the meeting today?
So we were provided the light standard. I was unaware of the light change until like a week and a half ago. I didn't have the time to calculate that lighting. So I certainly apologize, but I just didn't have the time to run that analysis when I was provided with the light that was actually installed versus what was approved.
I have a question for you in regards to the fence and the gate. Personally, the sides, I don't have an issue with. The front, I have an issue with. Where, how does the gate open? Does it open in or out?
It opens in, and it's going to have something similar to like a garage opener. Where you have a button, you hit the button, and the garage swings, and then the gate swings.
What are the properties on fourth in that neighborhood have a gated thing? Personally, I think it changes, it's not within the look of the neighborhood, a gated compound. I mean, that's not the east side of Asbury. It's open yards.
I have to agree, it's not conducive to the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. When our planner gets up, we'll have her address that. I know next door, there is a fence on the property as well, but I hear you.
It makes it seem more like a gated community.
It's about the driveway gate, not necessarily the fence.
Correct, correct. It's definitely just that front.
Except, we haven't heard testimony about the change in the walkway.
I did speak to, the walkway from the front porch?
So you changed it, but why?
So again, the reason we changed that was if someone was parking in the rear parking area and going to that front unit, they were going to walk down the driveway, walk to the public sidewalk, then walk down and then walk back up.
So someone, there was already a sidewalk coming off the side that went from the front porch to the driveway. It was very important to the board to maintain the connection to the public sidewalk from the front door.
What about the mailman?
Right, so again, we did, we had had some conversations. If that needs to be provided, we would likely provide a sidewalk from the, on the west side of the driveway, going out to the public sidewalk.
No, it has to go from the front. It has, it has to resemble the other houses in the neighborhood and maintain the character that goes from the porch, pathway, public sidewalk. That is what we drilled into this agreement. Not to have it make a turn into the driveway, not to make it convenient for anybody, but more to keep the aesthetic and the look of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And isn't the benefit only to the one front unit?
Yes, it's a shorter path for them to walk.
I live on a corner house, and if I park in the back, walk along the sidewalk on the side, I go to the front public right of way, and then I go up my front path. I do it, so I don't find it a huge inconvenience.
By shorter path, I mean, I'm looking at this, there's no scale here. But we're not talking a quarter mile, or we're talking maybe feet, less than 10 feet. Am I correct? So you're asking the person in unit one to walk 10 more feet?
Well, so.
Approximately. If the sidewalk went out to the front, to the front walkway, didn't curve, as you said. You said it was done because you wanted to save from that person or that individual from having to walk out to the right of way and then walk down the driveway. But just to be clear, for the record, we're not talking a quarter-mile walk or 100 yards. We're talking approximately maybe 10 feet.
Well, it would be more than that. So if the front porch sidewalk went straight to the public right of way, from the front property line to the public sidewalk's about 12 feet.
Okay.
So they would be walking down the driveway towards the public sidewalk. So they'd be walking down 12 feet, and they'd be walking west on Fourth Ave, and then back up into the property. So again, it's a nominal amount. I'm not saying it's.
Except that if it had been built as designed, they wouldn't have to go out to the street at all because there'd be a walkway that extends directly from the porch into the driveway.
I agree with your plan.
And then my other question is, with the gate, this walkway is behind, behind the gate? Or, yes?
I believe it is, yes. Is it, what would the board think about if the walkway extended down to the front sidewalk, just as the original plan? Would we still maintain the walkway out to the side as well? Is that something that's viable?
Again, the board originally approved an access between, from the front porch to the driveway. But they needed a primary connection. Yeah, from that front porch. But we wanted that connection with the public sidewalk from the front door.
For the aesthetics of the neighborhood, Mr. Proll.
Right.
And not deviating to make it look specific to this compound. We wanted it to match other people's homes in the neighborhood. Do you understand?
I do.
So the other thing I want to point out, again, because we really kind of glossed over this, but the change to the building, that front porch is now closer to the street. And I was trying to get more information out of you about how this change is working and what the actual differences are from what was approved. So there are more steps now to get into the front unit than originally approved. And that front porch is closer to the street, so I was hoping we'd get some information about what happened with the grades.
Isn't that porch, it's deeper now than originally?
I believe so, yes. I'd like for somebody on their side to testify to that.
So I'll ask a question.
We'll have the planner testify to that as well, because this is important to that, but we can discuss that. I can read the room loudly clearly.
Isn't that a site plan issue?
So the first floor elevation did not change from what was approved to what was constructed. So the grades in the front of the property were actually raised in order to eliminate some stairs. But you are correct in that the front porch was built larger than what was initially approved. And then that does trigger some variance relief that we're here for this evening.
And how much larger was it built?
It's 1.8 feet larger towards the street.
Towards the roadway, towards the right of way?
That's correct.
So what's the setback now from the?
From the 18.2 feet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilder, what is the finished floor elevation now?
It is 24. It is 24 and was approved at 23.92. So if the next question is, well, how did the basement get taller? If the finished floor stayed the same, it's because the basement was set seasonally. That was how we got.
That was testified in the previous meeting.
Yeah, but.
Finished floors.
That may not be the last one. I'm sorry, I have a, the last plan I have from the previous application has a finished floor elevation of 2160.
So what happened was at the very sort of tail end of the approval process, we did additional soils testing and got subsurface groundwater much higher than we anticipated. And that's why the original plan actually had front porches on the sides that were stepped because we had to get additional steps to get to that finished floor elevation because we had to pick it up so that the basement cleared the seasonal high water table. So the plans were approved again with the first floor of 2392 and was built at 24, so right, you know, within.
What do you mean approved at 2392? If I had, if you just said that, yeah, you're right, it was 2160, and we had to raise everything to clear the groundwater.
It was raised prior to the plan sign-off. So the revised, the homes.
So there was a set in between?
I'm not sure what revision number you have.
Well, when did you do the testing? Was it after?
I don't remember when the, my office did not do the testing. I don't remember when it was done. I believe it was done in 20, 2020, I think. I don't remember when it was done.
I meant in relationship to when the last hearing was.
No, it was done prior to resolution compliance being perfected.
Okay, but not.
But was it done, was it done prior to November 2020?
Prior to the last hearing.
That might be the right date, but November.
Prior to the last hearing.
Was the last hearing.
The home was raised due to the groundwater issue after this board had granted approval.
There we go.
That's what the question, okay.
And those revised plans were submitted and they were signed off on. And then it wasn't.
Those revised plans were signed off on?
The city signed off the plans and issued permits based off those revised plans. And we had submitted, I don't have the letter with me, but we submitted plans indicating that the finished floor of the home was elevated to account for this issue. This was not something that we had done trying to pull one over. We were abundantly obvious with the issue that we encountered and the change to the site plan that had to occur.
There were weekly inspections. There was a lot of conversation that went on, and that's on us.
Well, no, no, I mean, that's the next step. So just to clarify, right? You guys give your approval, we get our resolutions, Doug and I review revised plans to make sure they comply with all those conditions. Sometimes we get additional information afterwards that affects details, but not necessarily design, right? So something like raising the elevation to clear for groundwater might not have any other impact on the site, except for, yeah, you might need more steps on the front. And as long as it doesn't affect the building height, that would be administratively approved. And so my understanding is that is likely what happened, and that's why there's that difference. But I wasn't part of that process, so I didn't see the change in the height until now. And so that, you know, has made me question, well, do we still comply with building height? You know, why are we having this disconnect? And now I better understand it, but it doesn't address the depth of the porch. And the other, and the other.
And it doesn't.
Constructed issues.
I know it's not for your testimony now, but I just want to understand. This groundwater issue also is not going to impact our discussion of the basement height that we talked about the last meeting.
I mean, it shouldn't because of the testimony they've given us before.
Yeah, so the testimony that was given before was that it was dug deeper. So it doesn't affect the overall height of dwelling.
Again, but that's not because of, it seems.
It's not related to the groundwater.
It's not related to groundwater, maybe it makes no sense, okay.
Correct.
Testified that it was a mistake. That's why that was a mistake to dig too deep.
Right, so the porch being bigger, was that a mistake too? Or was that just something done on purpose?
We don't have testimony on that yet.
And I am unable to answer that question. And the last comment I had.
So let me just ask a question before you go on. The original setback to the porch was 20 feet?
Correct.
And now it's 18, too?
Yes, sir.
18.2, I should say.
Yes, sir. And then the last comment to address in the insight letter would be, excuse me, regarding the enclosure for the trash cans in the rear. We are going to install a closure. There's like a Rubbermaid, I'm not going to call it a shed, but it's like a little Rubbermaid enclosure, keeps animals out. Those will be installed on-site to aesthetically shield the trash enclosure. So that just has not been installed yet, but it will be, whatever other conditions are.
Will that be installed before any, I mean, I don't know what the board's going to do. I don't want to put any words, but that will be installed before any request for a certificate of occupancy.
Sure, I mean, they're Rubbermaid sheds, you can pick them up and put them down. So there's nothing, it doesn't require a footing or anything like that.
And the wheel stops as well?
The wheel stops are a function of whatever we end up doing in the rear. Obviously, we're not going to put the wheel stops in now when there's a gravel base, whether it's porous pavers, porous asphalt, porous concrete. The wheel stops will be installed, but it will be after whenever that material selected is put down. So I think that addresses the site plan-related comments.
Any further questions for Mr. Wildman from the board? Board professionals?
Just questions.
Anybody in the public for Mr. Wildman? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Shannon O'Hara at 706 Fourth Avenue. I've just, my cousin's an engineer and has been emailing Mr. Wilder with some questions and related to the back parking lot. I'm just concerned that I don't want any water running onto my property, and she felt that there might be problems, so we've been communicating back and forth.
Do you have a question for Mr. Wildman?
I just wanted to make sure that the, I have some from her.
What is your name again?
Shannon O'Hara.
Shannon.
So the one was, basically, and this is, apologies, there was an email chain, but it was about the porous pavers, wanted to know that basically a stormwater analysis is going to be the same for a 10-year flood event. Like, should I be concerned about runoff into my backyard?
Mr. Wildman, do you have an answer for that?
Sure, so I was conversing with their engineer, and I explained to them that the way the site is designed and graded is that everything she flows towards Fourth Avenue. Almost nothing, not almost nothing, nothing is draining to any of the adjacent properties. And that is true now and with any and all changes we wanted to make, whether approved or not, that would be true post-development as well.
But I think your question was regards to a 10-year event or?
Correct, so again, the system that's on-site was designed to effectively have zero runoff for the two and 10-year storm event. That will be true whether you put in porous pavers or porous asphalt. So if we do put in porous asphalt with this board's approval, we would submit additional reports and information substantiating that. But the stormwater analysis design doesn't change based on this revised plan versus what was originally approved.
Please proceed.
Yep, the next is, is there a plan or drawing that shows the final grading plan that supports the sloping? And just wanted to make sure that there's a way to ensure that there's not intended, an intended sheet flow runoff going a long distance. So making sure my property is protected. And sorry, again, I'm not an engineer, but.
Mr. Wildman? We have prepared a grading plan, and the final asphalt was also prepared by my firm with the exception of the rear area, which is still gravel, so it sits a little bit low. The site has been graded consistent with sheet flow from the rear to the front of the property. So there should be no surface runoff onto any adjacent residential properties.
And then, I think this was partially addressed earlier, but she wanted to know what the warranties and guarantees are being provided with porous asphalt material and design, and what installation warranties being applied.
I'm not entirely understanding the question.
Never mind.
Sorry, you had written, well, I guess she'd asked what the reason for the change was, and you'd said availability of materials as well as warranties, guarantees. The developer was not able to find a company which would guarantee the pavers, which you would cross-section, which is required through the NJDEP through the BMP manual. So I think you spoke to that earlier. Her follow-up was, what are the warranties, guarantees being provided with the porous asphalt material and design, and what installation warranties being applied to that?
So with the porous asphalt, you don't have the same guarantee as you do with the porous concrete. Again, the porous asphalt, this is what porous asphalt is used for. So we have no issues with the porous asphalt. The requirement for the state is that the porous asphalt has 15 to 25% porosity. So has larger voids in the aggregate to allow the water to pass through. Again, porous asphalt is much more widely used at the moment than porous pavers for vehicle-loading situations. But what would happen is the, I would get a shop drawing to review that would provide the information so I can certify that the asphalt section does meet the state standards, but you don't have the same warranty or guarantee issue with porous asphalt as you do with regular, with porous pavers.
But I think that the question that she's asking, which I guess I'd like to hear the answer to also, is what sort of warranty are you being given as to the porous asphalt? So let's, if you could just answer that question first, like what, what is the nature of the warranty that you get?
For the porous asphalt, I, the applicant is probably more appropriate to speak to the warranty that as it relates to the porous pavers. But from a porous asphalt standpoint, again, the porous asphalt has no issue with, the issue that we're running into with the pavers is related to the subbase. They're concerned that the subbase is not suitable and sufficient for the turning operations. You don't have that concern with porous asphalt.
No, but you keep telling us that, but you keep saying that the reason that you're choosing one over another is because the contractor wouldn't warrant, I don't know, the integrity of it, the durability of it. We don't know what that is, but we're trying to understand, what are you getting? What are you getting that you're not getting with the other product? What goes wrong? What do you get when that happens?
So the benefit to the porous asphalt is this is what it is used for. So there are no concerns from a settlement. There's no warranty needed for porous asphalt. This is what porous asphalt, it's used for vehicular loading areas. It's used for if you have a fire truck emergency access. That is what the porous asphalt is used for. This is a somewhat unique implementation of porous pavers in that you have a lot of vehicular turning movements in a small area. It's a different product. It's a different product. The porous asphalt doesn't have the same concerns whatsoever as it relates to the potential maintenance of the pavers themselves.
So, the porous asphalt has never had situations where it buckled or collapsed because of the base?
Cracks or...
Like, it withstands the heat and the turning and the heavy cars sitting on it?
And the snow plowing and the...
Like, there's been no issues?
Asphalt has a lifespan, so don't think that if they put in porous asphalt...
But doesn't everything have a lifespan?
It does, it does. But typically, a typical asphalt road, maybe a 30-year lifespan. Porous asphalt is maybe a 20-year lifespan. So, it does require maintenance. The maintenance for a porous asphalt is you can never seal code it.
So, the maintenance is just cheaper with the asphalt, correct?
It's easier from a...
Easier and cheaper?
I couldn't tell you the cost to maintain pavers versus porous asphalt. But it's more commonly used for this type of application.
But what, specifically, what is the guarantee that you're getting for the asphalt?
I don't know that.
But you testified, but you testified earlier that one of the reasons why you prefer the asphalt is because you're getting a guarantee you're not getting from the paving, from the paver contractor. You testified to that earlier.
I testified that the, you don't need the warranty for the porous asphalt. The porous, because again, this is what it's used for.
But I specifically asked you, I said, are you getting a guarantee from the asphalt contractor, and you said yes?
Then I misspoke, and I apologize.
So, you're not getting a guarantee from either contractor or the asphalt contractor?
I have not, my client has been in contact with both the pavement companies and the pavers. I was, it was explained to me that the paving, the paver company will not offer warranties. But what I can tell you is from the porous pavement, this is what porous pavement is used for in all applications.
We understand that, we understand that, but as I said, when you sat down here, your testimony was, is that one of the reasons for going for the asphalt over the pavers? Was that the paving contractor, or the, sorry, the peaver contractor was not giving you a guarantee? And I specifically asked you, I said, are you getting a guarantee from the contractor that's doing the asphalt, and you said yes? So, your testimony now, just to be clear, your testimony now, is that neither contractor is going to give you a guarantee?
I have had no conversations with any of the contractors providing the services regarding warranties.
So, that you have no testify, you're not testifying to any guarantee then?
I'm testifying that I was advised that the paver company will not certify the paver installation because they have concerns about the long-term viability.
So, we can publicly move on. So, the testimony is that he's gotten information from someone else about this.
That's not viable for me.
Which the board can take the credibility of that testimony. Instead of belaboring the point, the board can take the credibility of the testimony. I think there's enough information, and we should move on.
And someone else is here, just so you know.
I know. And do you have any further questions for Mr. Wildman?
There was just one further one, and I know you said that there, you'd send the shop drawing one available, but I wanted to know, once the shop drawing is approved within the 15% to 25% acceptable range, what field tests are being performed to ensure the batch arrives and meets this requirement? Is there a typical specification that's being followed, and that's just to make sure it's properly porous?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall what post-installation testing is required for porous asphalt. We would follow the BMP manual, the Best Management Practices manual. They dictate both the installation, maintenance, and long-term longevity of the product. So, I don't know off the top of my head what post-installation testing they require, but whatever it is, we would provide it.
I have a follow-up question. When we originally achieved resolution compliance for this project, I believe part of that, and I apologize, I can't pull up the file right now, but did you not have to submit a stormwater ONM manual as part of this?
We did.
Okay, so part of that is, and we always ask that that gets filed with the deed for the property. And the big picture here is that, you know, maintenance is obviously a big issue. You know, these things, whether they're pavers or pavement, they have a lifespan, and they need to be properly maintained. So, I would ask that, you know, I'm not, you know, this is a big if. If porous pavement was to be allowed, that the stormwater ONM manual be updated to reflect pavement in lieu of pavers. That would be my one stipulation, so that it could be properly maintained, because it is different.
I understood, that makes sense, yeah.
We would have no issue with that.
Any further questions for Mr. Wildman from the public? Thank you, Mr. Wildman.
Thank you.
I make a motion to take a five-minute or 10-minute recess.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jose Alcaraz?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Adeloni?
Here. Mr. Pearl, your next witness.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have McKinley is coming up. And she's with Hiring Rule as a professional planner. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you can state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure. McKinley Mertz, M-E-R-T-Z. Business address is 236 Broad Street in Red Bank, New Jersey.
Could you provide us your credentials?
My pleasure. I have a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also have the National AICP certification. I'm a principal at Hired Rule and Associates. I have testified in front of many boards recently. I was in Summit, Lane, Branchburg. Have not had the pleasure of being in front of you before. But I have lived in Asbury Park for seven years, and I do serve as a planning board planner and zoning board planner on about nine different boards in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
May I say?
Please.
Yes.
And your licenses are still current?
Yes, thank you. My licenses are current and active.
And what is your name again?
McKinley Mertz.
McKinley Mertz.
Like the mountain and Fred Nethel.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, I do, too.
So, are you going to be testifying about the interior of the property, or just giving us your planner's opinion?
So, I'll be talking about the various deviations that we continue to need as a component of our application, as well as the FAR issue we were having with the basement. I am not a licensed architect though, so I will not be providing architecture.
This is why I'm asking you in terms of that.
Right, so I can only talk from the planner's perspective.
Okay, please do.
So, just as a reminder, why, what the deviations that we continue to need are tonight in terms of our bulk variances. As the engineer testified to previously, the front porch is six feet, nine inches projected into the front yard instead of the allowed five feet. So, that leaves us with an 18.2-foot front yard setback from our property line. It is about an additional 12 feet to the edge of the sidewalk, and then another about eight or nine feet to then the cartway itself. Additionally, because of the slight increase in the size of the porch, as well as what was noted at our hearing last month, the side porches were extended about a foot out. That all contributed to a slight increase in our building coverage. So, we were previously approved at 26.7%. We now have 27.7% building coverage. Again, with those side porches being pushed out a foot, that brings us a little bit closer to the east property line, as well as the building to the east of us. The property on that corner there, there's a back building that's much closer to the property line. It's about three feet from the property line. So, the porches are, I believe, if I have the right, 15 feet from that building. Whereas, wait, I'm sorry, let me just double-check that. Yes, thank you. They're 15 feet from the lot line, 18 feet from that adjacent structure. They're required to be 18, 20 feet from the structure. So, last time we got, we received variance relief from them being, I'm getting my numbers backwards. They were 19 feet from that structure, so we just are one foot closer than we were previously. So, we've made that variance a little bit worse, so we need to, we would need a new variance from this board for that deviation. Additionally, from your design standards, what has already been spoken to tonight is that we do not have a walkway that leads straight to the sidewalk on the current proposed plans. We also do have a gate in front of our driveway. The fence which was spoken to before was originally, when I say originally, in this recent iteration, was placed on the front lot line. We are going to move that back a foot though, so that will meet your ordinance. So, we're eliminating that, excuse me, that variance condition. That takes care of the setback. The building materials, we were approved for shingles and clapboard siding. We still have the siding, however, we do not have the shingles anymore. We have board and batten siding instead, so I'll be speaking to that as well. I do have an exhibit which is new to you. Which exhibit are we on?
Three. Three or...
Two, so.
The picture's...
It's one of the ones.
We did it as a packet, yeah. So, this will be A2, exhibit?
This will be amended A2.
Amended A2.
So, this is a packet of three pages of photos that I took myself showing our property, as well as the neighboring properties around us on Fourth Avenue. So, wait till everyone has a copy of that.
So, we're in markets as a packet, all the books. Thank you. Lori, did you get a copy?
Not yet. Which one?
Did you get A1?
I have that, yep.
Make sure you mark it, A1.
Thank you. So, again, these are, well, I'm going to start on the first phase, first page of this exhibit. There are two photos taken here. I took them myself on April 10th, 2023. I'm standing in the driveway of our property, right in line with the bottom step of our steps leading up to our porch. The first photo on the left is looking west towards 706 Fourth Avenue. And the photo on the right, I just turned around right where I was standing and took a photo of 700 Fourth Avenue, which is the property immediately to the east, the large purple house on the corner. So, we do require, as I said before, a variance for porch encroachment, which we did not previously. It is one foot, nine inches closer to the front lot line than this board approved in 2020. However, given the neighborhood context of the various porches surrounding us, you can see in the first photo to the left that the bottom step, or perhaps the second step in, is right in line with the posts of our neighbor to the east. Her steps are even a couple of feet in front of ours. You can't see them because they were hidden behind the white picket fence there. Beyond that, you can see the property directly to the east of her, and again, it is almost exactly in line with her porch. And again, those postings are right in line with our first or second step. Additionally, when we're looking at that photo on the right, looking east toward 700 Fourth Avenue, we are right in line with the second tier, I'll say, of that property owner's porch that sticks out a little bit. And their steps even go a little bit further than ours do. So, Asbury Park's ordinance, the master plan documents, they all talk about, again, these porches and these architectural features that are so important to our community. We acknowledge that we are one foot, nine inches further than we're supposed to be, but we do believe it maintains consistency with our neighbors and the block that we're on and the context of our neighborhood. I cannot speak, I wasn't there when they were built, so I cannot answer any questions about why they were built in the way they are. But I do feel that the six-foot-nine depth is a more appropriate depth for a porch. It does fit furniture better. There's a little more room. If you want to put up a gate, I've seen people do that to keep their dogs on the porch. It just allows a little more living space. I do feel that there is no detrimental effects to the neighborhood, given that we really are actually behind our neighbors who are long-established and long-existing front porches. Also, because our property line is further back from the sidewalk and from the roadway, we're not creating any big street walls that would be kind of bearing down on pedestrians. We have the luxury of having that very wide right-of-way. So, we do feel that we are more consistent with our neighborhood, and we don't see a detriment with this variance. And we do ask for you to consider that and allow us to keep the slightly deeper porch, which I think will provide a better living space for whoever ultimately lives in that front unit. If I can go to the second page of this packet. The top photo, this is page two of three, is a Google Street View from July 2018. Just as a reminder, for what, the red house on the left, of course, was what was there before, and it's incredibly close proximity to the house immediately to the east. The photo on the bottom was taken by myself on April 10th, 2023. Just, I'm sure everyone is familiar with the property, but as a reminder, that is what it looks like as of today, and as was testified to by our engineer. The only difference from when this photo was taken was that they added the dry well on the east side of the house. So, this is how the property remains today. And it's, it is my opinion as a planner that the porches are really consistent with each other. Of course, our house is slightly wider than the house to the east, but they're set back at a similar distance. They're consistent in height, and I do believe in style. I think they, I do believe they complement each other nicely, and that it's an appropriate alternative to pushing it back 1.9 feet. Because, again, we said this before, because of that porch being slightly enlarged and the two side porches being enlarged, we do have a slight increase in building coverage. However, also just, if we had come in today as a new application, the current zoning standard for this zone would be a 30% building coverage standard. The previous zone required 25%, which is what we came in under. So, we do meet the current standard. Again, I know that's not what we're...
Well, let's not go too far here. You're under the old order.
I understand, yes, yes, I understand.
And if you were coming in today, you would be dealing with a single-family neighborhood, not a multifamily house.
So, you're exactly right. It is interesting that the use was downzoned, but the bulk standard was increased a little bit. We are with a more intensive use and a lesser building coverage than what a single family would be allowed to build. That was the point I was trying to make, was that even under your current zoning, we're coming in with a less intensive coverage than you might see with a conforming today application. But we are...
But you wouldn't have been approved as a three-family though, Ms. Mertz, so your point is not really taken well.
Okay, understood. We can move on from that then. So, to the point of our 27.7, where the 25 is required. Again, I think the arguments I just made for desiring the increase in the front porch to be a little more livable area contributes to that. Same with the, the same goes for the side porches, providing just a slightly more usable area. If you remember, those side porches, they're the entrances into the side units, but then they also have open balconies on top. They do not have roofs, but they extend from the living, I believe it's the bedroom units on the upper floors. So, the one foot, we felt provided just a slightly better use of that space, as well as letting in a little more sunlight. Again, the building at the rear of, and I apologize, I do not remember which lot number that is, but the lot number to the east of us, that building is, again, only three feet from the lot line, and it's lot six, thank you. And it's about in line with our back two units entryways. So, there is a little, there is a shadow created, especially in the morning times, which is when this first, this photo was taken on page two. So, it just allowed us a little bit more light into those usable spaces for those tenants. So, again, I do think that contributes to the building coverage increase. We do have appropriate stormwater management in place. And again, whether or not we go with the porous pavers or the porous asphalt, there is a significant amount of stormwater management that's happening on the site to help combat any of the potential issues associated with that slight increase in coverage. Speaking with that, again, we have our variance for the building separation. Those porch structures, the posts of those structures, they're 15 feet from the property line, which is not a variance, but they are 18 feet from that neighboring structure on lot six. That triggers our relief here tonight. Again, I think everything I just said really speaks to that. We're also, the porches and the balconies on the second floor, they're not enclosed spaces. The purpose of a standard that your ordinance has about keeping massings of building away from each other is just that. You don't want big walls encroaching on your neighbor's property. You don't want theirs encroaching on yours. The porch structures are, while they're structures, so they count towards the standard, they are open on all sides. The bottom one, of course, has a roof because there's a balcony on top of that, but the balcony itself has no roof. So, we're not bringing a lot of massing in. We're also looking at the back of that structure because they do, that does seem to be a back building that has direct access and entryways onto, excuse me, my allergies have been acting up, onto bond there. So, we are facing the back of their structure. We do not feel like there will be any potential detriment to them or any other neighborhoods, but it does allow our future tenants to have slightly more space to work with.
How big are those upstairs balconies? What were they approved at, and what are they now?
They are, the upstairs balconies are five feet deep, and... 11, 11 feet, 11 inches wide.
That's what they are now, right?
That's what they are now. My understanding, I do not have the old plans, and I wasn't part of that application. My understanding was that they were 11 feet, 11 inches wide always, but they were only four feet deep. So, it's just, it's that extra foot. And if one of my colleagues thinks I'm wrong, they can come up and whisper that in my ear, and I'll let you know.
You mentioned that you didn't cover the porches because you wanted this...
You mentioned that you didn't cover the porches because you wanted this open effect. How do you then justify that you want a gate across the front driveway? If you're trying to maintain this open community and this open space, how do you justify your client's request for a gate, a security gate, across the front walkway or the front driveway?
Sure. So while it is a security gate, which is one of our deviations tonight, we are not proposing a solid fence or gate. It is, it is open, so there will still be transparency between. We're not cutting off the visuals of the site. It will still appear very light and open and let air and open space come through it. There won't be, and it is, it's four feet tall, it's not, it's not a very tall fence. So there, I've seen other fences in town where they have, and even across the street from us, there's a chain link fence that's at 707 4th Street across from us. There's, unfortunately, I didn't put a photo in my packet of it, but it is a chain link fence with those green slats that run through it, so it's completely opaque, and that's right on the sidewalk. And that too has a gate that's...
But as you understand, Ms. Mertz, just because one house may have something doesn't mean that we automatically approve it for your application.
Sure, but my point is that ours is not so foreboding and closed off as that one is. We're trying to provide safety and security to our property while still maintaining an open atmosphere. We're not, we're not providing a big opaque wall that really, you know, sequesters us off from the public right of way.
I'm struggling with why the applicant feels it, there's such a need for a security measure on this property unlike anyplace else in the neighborhood.
I can't speak to that, to that reasoning. That was a, that's an owner question. But I can say, I live in a multifamily on the north side of town on Deal Lake. We have a gate, it's one of the larger ones. It's one of, it's the Deal Lake Towers is where I am. We have gates going into our rooftop deck, not rooftop deck.
It's vastly different.
No, I know that's a multifamily, but I don't think, I don't think safety is necessarily more important for a multifamily versus a, a large multifamily versus a three-family.
I'm not sure I would call Deal Lake Towers a multifamily, but okay.
There's 110 units in it, so.
That's a complex. So, Deal Lake Towers. One of my concerns is the way you've characterized each of these, each of these exceptions that are presenting problems to us. And you're saying, well, this is just minor. It's just a little here, a little there, but we still have, like, all of the exceptions benefit the applicant and the potential tenants in that building, but they don't address the impact on the surrounding properties. And in these close, really in close properties, the difference of a foot, a foot nine is a lot of space. When we look at the side porches, you say that they're open, and they're open for your prospective tenants, and they allow more light in, but they also allow them to overlook the neighbor's properties. The sense of closeness and the lack of privacy increases with each one of these things that deviate from the approvals that have been granted. And so far, you haven't, I don't think that you've really given us any countervailing reasons why when you're, the applicant has chosen to build a multifamily unit and didn't have to build that. Maybe the interior could have been smaller, so the porch could have been properly set back and you would have given up interior space. I mean, there, there, there were choices that could have been made, and there were choices that were made in each instance that did nothing for the community, but simply enhanced the applicant's property.
No, it's a very good question. It's a good point. So part of what my job is as the planner is to come here and look at these individual deviations that we have and look at them from two perspectives. And I didn't call them out specifically, but we have our typical C variance criteria, the positive and negative. I'm sure this board is intimately familiar, doing what you all do. So my points with these various issues that we're dealing with is that there is, in my opinion, there is no detriment to our neighbors from a slightly extended porch.
But you're also minimizing each thing and presenting it to us as, well, it's no big deal. It's only, it's only two feet here, it's only one foot there. Each thing was, well, you know, you're presenting it to us like it doesn't matter. That's the way we see it, Ms. Mertz. And unfortunately, it's hard for us to accept the fact that it just shouldn't matter.
And I apologize if that's how it came across. I certainly didn't mean to say it doesn't matter because we do view our communities very closely. We want them to be consistent.
But you haven't given us a reason why they were done.
I cannot give you a reason why things happen.
Which is unfair for us, right? You've been chosen as Mr. Proll because you people don't know anything about the application.
And unfortunately, we spoke for hours.
And if you really wanted to know, you should have checked the videos.
About the sizes of porches and the sidewalk. And, you know, unfortunately, you guys are getting the brunt of this board, but we approved something. And then only because something was discovered are you back. But we sit here every other Tuesday. The applicant couldn't, could have come back at any point and said, we need a bigger this, we need to turn the driveway, we need to do, and they never came back. So now we're forced to hear this again with these errors, deviations, and it's rather annoying, quite frankly.
And you have not provided any reasons to us.
I cannot speak to the reasons why things were constructed in certain ways.
You said that, I get that.
So, yeah, I don't have a different answer.
So that's not fair. Honestly, Ms. Mertz, that's not fair to us.
We are going to have the applicant come up and testify, so we're not there yet if I could. And I'll just say that I wasn't picked because I don't know anything. I actually did watch the video and, as I noted at the start, it was really...
But did you watch all the way back to 2020?
Oh, sorry, yes.
No, you never did, Mr. Proll.
Because we spoke for hours and hours and hours.
This application went on for like 20 hours.
The reason why porches were in certain dimensions.
So your knowledge is limited, and you're telling us your knowledge is limited. That's not fair to the board.
And again, you know, and I guess...
That's not fair to you, to sit here and testify in something you don't know.
And again, to say that these things are not significant and they're not material, well then, why did you need to build them in opposition to what was approved?
So when I think the applicant comes up, he'll testify about his talks with representative of the city, that he thought this was a better idea. And I get, it's not an ideal situation. He should have come back, and here we are. So we're going to ask for that mercy that I spoke of earlier, but you'll have the moment, of course, to talk to the applicant. There are reasons why this happened this way. It wasn't to thumb his nose at this board, absolutely not. And it wasn't a sign of disrespect, it wasn't any of that. So we're trying to lay the foundation for the consistency with the neighbor's...
But do you understand how we feel, Mr. Proll?
Absolutely.
And each one of you has said that, well, I was not prior to this application. What does that mean to us?
So we're here to present testimony about these deviations and to ask for permission here.
You're actually asking for forgiveness, not permission.
Absolutely. So when the applicant comes out, there'll be an explanation of why changes were made that are actually organic. They're not, again, they're not meant to thumb his nose at this board or to flagrantly violate rules. There were conversations that happened on the ground, there were game moment decisions that happened there, and it was under the understanding that that was okay. And you'll hear reasons why. And I get it, no, I do. I understand the board's perspective and why they're upset. Please don't think that I don't get that. And there'll be a moment when this applicant will explain that. You know, and look, I'll tell you, the porches that were designed originally, it just wasn't a great fit there. And looking at the houses right next door on the inside...
But as sophisticated builder, Mr. Proll, he knew what he was designing and building.
And spoke to and testified to two and three years ago. And agreed to, and agreed to making a five-foot porch.
There was no ambiguity in what he said to us.
Right. But what I'll say is, you'll hear from him, I'm not going to speak for him.
But you are speaking for him.
Well, I'm not allowing him.
So why are you getting up here?
I got you. I'm his lawyer.
Both of you are speaking for him.
Right. I'm in a position as a lawyer to speak for him. His testimony will come up. You'll be able to put him through that process, but he had a number of conversations where he thought he had the ability to go forward in this way, and there was a reason, a legitimate, honest reason, why he approached that. So that's all I'll say. You know, I don't, no need to go down this rabbit hole right now. He'll come up and testify. I know you'll let him know your feelings as well.
I think he does.
Yes.
He'll be the next one.
Okay.
Ms. Mertz, please proceed.
I believe your planner has a question.
Actually, I have a question. So we've, we've heard testimony, planning testimony, about the front yard, the front porch encroachment, and now this side yard porch encroachments, the balcony encroachments. So I want to understand, I know there's a lot with this application. It rubs me too. Generally, we endorse the idea of having porches that are comfortable for sitting at the ground level. I appreciate that the board has opinions about anything on the upper floors, whether they're decks, balconies, any kind of overhangs. And so I respect that enlargement of those balcony spaces can be unacceptable. So let's, let's just focus on the front. So they've testified that the neighbor, the neighboring houses stick out closer to 4th Avenue than what they've got. The wider porch, we know, provides for a more comfortable seating. And if they comply with our previous understanding and request to make the connection to the street with the front walk and maybe give us some sort of compromise on a front fencing, is that still offensive to the board in and of itself? Is there some sort of impact? Again, it's not sticking out further than the neighboring houses. We have the provision in the ordinance about average setbacks and whatnot, the, you know, in this case, yeah.
Donna, that's a valid point.
I don't think we're there yet. We're not there in negotiating.
Asking the board that question is fair. I really don't think that is your question to ask.
All right, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
I'll just say it's a better porch to have a band on it, porch fest. I think that, you know, it's the, that sort of thing, but anyway, we'll continue.
All right, so I'm going to turn and speak to, and again, Mr. Chairman and board members, I'm not trying to put words in my client's mouth or to speak for him, I'm simply trying to put the proofs forward for these, these issues, these mistakes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mertz, I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
And I can appreciate where you're coming from.
I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm just saying that...
Oh, please, I think they're much worse, don't worry.
I understand that your role is to get us to move towards your position, I get that.
And I can, I'm certainly understanding of where you as a board are coming from. So with that, let me talk about the materials that we have, which are different from what you approved. I believe there was a comment earlier from you, Mr. Chairman, about previous discussions about availability during COVID, and this is where that came from, when my client and his team were working during the construction process. You know, COVID hit us all in very interesting ways. This was a decision made during COVID to move forward with a different siding so that construction didn't have to stop. Having said that, this is what we have in front of us that's on the front facade, as you can see in my photo. There are also accenting pieces that run down the driveway where the bay windows are on the side of the house. Even though this was done out of really necessity for the available materials at the time, I do feel that it is, that it does fit in with the neighborhood and is consistent with Asbury Park as a whole. Thank you. If you could zoom in on photo A at the top, this is page three, if that's on, I'm sorry. So this is, just to give everyone oriented, photo A here is 709 and a half 4th Avenue. This is the house that's across the street from us at the very eastern end, right before the commercial properties start on Main Street. This is a home that, right in our neighborhood, does have an example of vertical...
It's on the western side then, right before Main Street.
I apologize, thank you. My dyslexia takes over with the compass sometimes.
No, that's okay, I just want to make sure I'm...
Absolutely, thank you, you're correct, west side. So this is an example right in, I would say our immediate neighborhood is that block of us between Bond and Main Street. So this is an example right in our area that has vertical siding. It also, on the upper floors, has slightly wider horizontal siding. If you could zoom back out, thanks, through the whole page. Generally, these are, I am missing two houses on the street that, on our block immediately, that are not included, but generally, in photo B, we have 708 and 710 4th Avenue. In photo C, we have 703 4th Avenue, and in photo D, we have 700 4th Avenue. And walking the neighborhood also, so you can see from these photos, there's a variety of A styles but colors. Generally speaking, in our area, there are a lot of different siding materials that are used. In our immediate area, photo A shows that we do have some vertical siding. There is also, outside of our neighborhood, we extend, if we head further east on 4th Street, we get into more stucco or ephesus siding. There's variations even on our street of the width and materials used for the siding. Some of them are very wide, some of them are quite thin. Some of them are flat and flush, others have the offset. When you go down Bond, there are, towards south, towards Asbury Avenue, just my experience from walking this every Friday night when I go home after going out downtown, there are other homes in the area that have either vertical siding or specifically board and batten siding. The Cedar Shank siding that was previously approved, I know the house right next to us has that on their front facade. We were supposed to put it on portions of our front facade. It was not going to be a full, the full length, but it was highlighted in certain areas. While that is in our immediate neighborhood, it really does not characterize the entire neighborhood. I don't see that as the prevailing material across the entire, the entire street or block. There is an eclectic range of siding materials, and I think ours fits in quite nicely to the neighborhood. The colors, you know, we fit in with a variety of different colors. We're taking a little more neutral stance by doing them as white, but clearly there is, there is a history of eclectic and unique styles within, within our immediate area. So I do feel from a planning perspective that it does fit into the context. I think the Cedar Shank siding may have even been too repetitious, seeing as our neighbor right next door to us has a lot of that on the front facade. And they would be the only two on this immediate part of the block that has that. So by, by doing the board and batten and horizontal siding, we do really even prep, we provide an offset and variety, but while sticking with the character of the neighborhood. It's a, you typically see board and batten on some older 1930s homes during the Depression, World War II era. So it really even is a hearken back to some of the more, that era of historic homes in the neighborhood. With that, I will go on to our, the D variance for the basement. Again, I'm not going to speak to the actual construction and design, as I'm not qualified to that, but I'm going to provide the planning criteria and to request that you consider granting us the D4 FAR variance for that basement. We've already discussed, and you're correct, what the testimony from last time was, the reason for the increased height in that basement is because the basement was dug deeper. I have been told by our architecture team that the overall height of the building has not changed from what you approved. It's simply that we went a little deeper into the ground and that was a mistake of the...
Was there any remediation done in the basement at this time or prior?
When you say remediation, what is it?
The height of the basement at this point.
As of right now, we're still requesting the seven feet 11 inches that we came to you...
So the FAR has increased.
It is the same as you saw last April, but it has increased as, from what you had approved. It was approved at... Ooh, I didn't write the approved. We have .74.
It wasn't approved.
No, it was not approved.
It was a draw.
Oh, thank you, that's why I don't have it as approved. Yeah, they withdrew the FAR, thank you so much. They withdrew the FAR, so you approved it as of right, it was conforming, FAR conforming use. We now need the FAR variance, I apologize for that. FAR of .5 is permitted with the lowered basement to make it a habitable FAR area. We have .74. So I'm going to go through the D variance criteria for our request for it. Typically, with an FAR standard, you are looking, when I say you, I mean the broader communities are looking to control massing of your structures. They, because it's the floor area, you're usually looking at areas above grade. Your kitchen, your living room, your bedrooms, those all contribute to the massing of a structure, and FAR is a standard that is designed to keep that massing under control.
Ms. Mertz, before you...
Ms. Mertz, before you proceed, I thought the architectural plans were, weren't the architectural plans modified since the last hearing?
I believe they were updated to show the changes in-
Wasn't there a ceiling height change?
There's a detail on my side that shows they're gonna lower the ceiling height, yeah.
Can you give me just one moment?
Yeah, take a complete-
I mean, without the architect here, I don't know if we can have this.
I, I don't want the testimony from the planner. In fact, I, I think she shouldn't be testifying at all to this.
Well, they have to tell us what they're doing.
Right. We need that from our architect.
Well, where is the architect? You're not an architect, I'll remind you, Ms. Mertz.
Trust me, I know. You're right. There is a, there is, there was a revised sheet dated April 18th, 2023, that was submitted to this board.
Now we understand your question, actually, while you're asking. No change has been made. This is an option that's out there. Ideally, we want the FAR variance.
We need the architect then, to discuss it.
And I also think that at the last hearing, we specifically asked for two options to come back before this board on how to remediate the basement issue, and two plans for raising the floor or fixing the ceiling and not having a drop ceiling. So tonight, I was expecting to have those options before us, and I don't see an architect, and I don't see those two plans that we specifically asked for at that last hearing.
So our architect wasn't available. We can come back at another meeting if that's what the board requires. This is one option. Our other option is to go with the variance. But one of the other things we're gonna suggest is offer for the tenants, that there would be a provision in their lease. I think the board's concern overarching here is the use of that space, whether it be someone sitting down there as some kind of a room. We would put a provision in any lease that that would not be the, it's only for storage of materials related to structure.
We have to get it to 611.
I'm not sure that's acceptable, Mr. Proll.
All right. And we'll bring an architect then, if that's what's necessary.
Well, we would like to discuss it with the architect. And please forgive me, Ms. Mertz. We, we would discuss it with you if you were an architect.
Understood. Absolutely.
To be clear, the plans that were submitted have a separation wall section detail, and it shows a new ceiling height of six foot eleven on page one, A1.
But we don't have somebody here to talk about it.
We don't have somebody to testify to.
Right.
Nor do we know how that was achieved.
Exactly. Or if it solves the stair problem.
Right.
Or the door.
Or the door, that was-
So I'll be candid, we actually thought we'd have a limited amount of time tonight, which is typical, so if, if the board requires that, we're hoping you won't make us drop the ceiling. Okay, I get it. It's, it's a long shot.
I think you should look at last month's meeting.
No, I did. I watched. There were gaps.
No, I don't think you did. I don't think you did. If you just said that, I don't think you did, because one of our, one of our proposals, which we felt very strongly about, was filling the floors.
And in fact, the entire discussion was about the basement.
So just so you know, the recording, there was 40 minute gap in it. There was a big issue with the recording, I'll be candid. So I acknowledge that I didn't see it all, but it wasn't, I tried, you know, but there was a huge gap in there.
Now you know.
Nonetheless, I recognize that our architect wasn't available, but we also thought we'd have a limited amount of time, because that's typically how the board is.
Understood, yeah. We only have you as an application tonight, so we were giving you-
You're very generous.
A long time to discuss the deviations in, in the resolution.
Yes. It was a surprise.
It's a good word, deviation.
And then, of course, after Ms. Mertz, we're gonna have the applicant himself come up, the representative testify as well. So now that we have time for that, and then we could deal with the architectural issue, if that's how the board wants to go. But again, like I said, we hadn't anticipated we'd have such a generous amount of time.
I would just add that to my other board members, we were looking for two options, not just lowering the ceiling. So just be aware of that when you come back, Rosa.
And I do think-
The bottom line was, the ceiling has to be less than seven feet.
Somehow.
Somehow the ceiling, like that was, that was the direction.
A permanent solution.
Yes, permanent, not-
And a permanent fix.
Correct.
But again, just to reiterate-
So obviously, the variance is off the table, Mr. Proll.
Okay, understood.
So I take that you would not like to hear variance testimony from the court.
No.
Understood. I had it all typed out.
You know, there was an organic reason for the height of this basement. There was no alternative mode of trying to create a space here. You'll hear from this, from the applicant, but it was just an issue. And by the way, this was all done, there was no secret to it. It was all done while the weekly inspections were going on and all that. So it wasn't like there was some kind of plot or plan here. It was just a natural part of what went on.
We're not accusing you of anything, Mr. Proll. There's no accusations here. We're just wanna know what happened, right?
Yeah. So we'll bring the applicant up here.
Would you allow me very quickly, for the benefit of the record, just to run through my negative criteria for what I have testified to?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'll be quick.
But you're gonna use up your applicant's time.
Oh, we have five minutes, don't we?
I would like to, can I, are you, are you going to address the issue of the mechanicals? How they ended up on the third floor?
The applicant will do that as well.
In a quick 30 second sum up of my negative criteria, I believe I touched on a lot of it before. Looking at deviations, issues, whichever word we want to use tonight, looking at them as a whole. Again, I know, and I'm not trying to minimize the importance of them individually, but I do think when we look at the negative criteria, considering them as a whole and their impact on the neighborhood and the community is an appropriate way to approach them. And it is my planning, it is my planning opinion that they do not have a substantial detriment on the neighborhood, the general welfare, any of our neighbors. We do focus on that word substantial, because every, every development has some kind of impact or detriment, but it's whether or not that elevates to substantial. We do feel that the proposals we have, the deviations, the issues, they are good solutions for our site-specific issues and conditions. There are a number of master plan goals and objectives from your 2016 master plan that support this, including encouraging buildings to add richness and a sense of creativity to Asbury Park's built environment, and the way we've been able to do a three-family building, which used to be a conforming use, but we have made it look like a one-family. The parking is hidden in the backyard. We do feel the porch in the front yard still maintain the appropriateness for the community, for the neighborhood, and that it is consistent, and that we do not pose a detriment upon it. How is that?
That was well done, Ms. Mertz. But don't go anywhere yet. Anybody on the board for further questions with Ms. Mertz?
Not at this time.
Or professionals? Anyone in the public for Ms. Mertz's testimony? Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. My pleasure.
So, Mr. Proll, I think this is a good time to stop.
Okay.
As you know, we want you to come back.
Yes, of course.
So, what do we have, Marie? I guess the next one would be the end of June, because I think June 13th is, is the next date. Is that correct?
Let me make sure that, well, we have two applications on already for that date.
Yeah, so let's push it to the end of June.
June 27.
Is there an option of a special meeting?
No, Mr. Proll. So the next meeting would be June 27th, is that correct? Are you amenable to, is your architect available to come back on June 27th? I think that's the bigger question.
We'll make it happen.
No objection to extend the mandatory time frame for decision.
And if you're going to resubmit any plans, do it-
June 6. All right, correct? Yes.
So I'll make a motion to carry, what is it, 704 Fourth Avenue?
No further notice.
To June 27th, without further notice.
Seven p.m.
As always.
Wendy Glassman, Jill Potter, Tim Slick, Jose Alcaraz, Vice Chair Don Scully, and Chairman Avalani. So we are moving to June 27.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.